I want to ask Dee if he would have prayer.
Thank you for this day. We thank you for all your blessings, Lord. We thank you for the sunshine that is outside today. We thank you for this commission and their families. Now, Lord, we pray that everything that we say in do be pleasing you in Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Let's pray allegiance to the flag.
I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any guest speakers?
We don't have any.
We don't, nobody signed up. Okay. First on the agenda is the county property disposal sealed bid opening. And Steve asked you if you would just open that, read it out. This is that property right in front of the courthouse there.
We only had one bid for that property. It was from Russell Lee. It says, I Russell Lee do hereby bid sixty-five thousand dollars for the property on Gordon Street, under the courthouse, place office, Georgia. He claims a check for a five percent deposit, which is three thousand two fifty.
Okay, that was the only bid we had.
Yes, sir. That's all we submitted.
Okay, only had one bid. Okay. We. Do we need to, we need to get that to the meeting?
Yes, sir. And then they would probably, I guess, I'll let Jennifer respond to it, but I would imagine at that point you decide whether you want to sell it for that price or not, and then you have to go to a vote to sign, uh, sell it. Is that correct?
Correct. So we have obviously, you know, put it out for sealed bid. We did get one response. So the commission now has the opportunity to accept that. And if so, we need to put it on the agenda tonight for the meeting. You know, one other, obviously, we've got, I think, an appraisal that is significantly higher than the bid amount. And so then one other option is to reject that sole bid and either sell it through a real estate agent or do a sealed bid again. So you've got a couple of options on the table.
Do we have to put it on tonight's agenda to do that, or can we talk about it in discussion?
We can talk about it in discussion. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's my point of view that we don't need to sell a building that's been appraised for half of its value.
I'll agree. Hundred percent.
I think it appraised at one eighteen?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Well, we have something like that. Bid y'all said y'all didn't. Yeah, the appraisal could be wrong. I have seen that before. Sometimes appraisal is a lot higher than you know what's being, when you look at face value on something.
Well, I guess that could be true. It also could be that it could be lower than what it's really fair market. So, you know, I mean, that's all we got. I think they did, what, three or four comparables?
I believe it was three.
Three with that?
Yes, sir.
And, uh.
We'll look at it and let's discuss. We will, we'll carry it over to the meeting. We can do that. Okay. We won't make a decision on that right now. We'll just wait till we go to the meeting with it.
Mr. Chairman, for me.
Let everybody think about it a little bit.
Okay, but for me, and Jennifer, you said we could put it on the agenda, which we will be voting to accept or reject, or if we just table it right now for?
Well, what I would recommend is it be put on the agenda either way. So then you can either vote to accept the bid or vote to reject the bid at a formal meeting.
Okay.
And then if you vote to accept the bid, obviously, it's done at that point. If you vote to reject the bid, then you'll have some further options. Any county property that's to be sold either has to be done through, you know, through an agency, through the real estate agent process, or through the sealed bid process. So we would have to go through that, one of those two avenues again, if it was, if you determine that rejecting the bid was the best course of action.
Or if we have something else, we might want to use that building before, we can always.
Of course. Yes. And then you would, that's right. You could change your mind, decide to keep it instead of sell it. That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll carry it over to the meeting then.
Okay, be.
Mr. Chairman, this is a proposed ordinance revision. At the last meeting, the commission voted to go with the Georgia burn permit service, the automated way to obtain a burn permit. And all this is doing is changing the reference in the ordinance to, uh, to mention that. So it's somewhat of a easy change in the, in the title there, uh, excuse me, in the section, paragraph under F. It references Georgia Forestry Commission, and so we'll change that to put the, uh, the Georgia Burn Permit Service there.
Okay.
Just so we can keep our ordinances updated.
Does that only change?
Yes, sir. I believe so. Isn't that right, Dee?
Yeah.
All right, that, you're going to put that on the, uh?
Yes, sir. We'll put that on the agenda too.
Oh, okay. Any more discussion on that? Anything on that burn?
No.
Okay, let's get to see ordinance revision of driveway pipe installation.
Um, this is also a proposed ordinance change, ordinance change for our encroachment, driveway and encroachment control. Uh, there was discussion about metal pipe versus concrete pipe. Um, the staff went through the ordinance and proposed some changes. Um, you can see some, um, some strikes there through there, what they are recommending to, uh, remove. And we're just bringing this to the commission for you to, to take a look at. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to read through it. Um, but I put it on here for discussion, just to see if there was any questions from the commission.
All right, I'm glad you did that. Uh, we.
These changes are, are, are a result of our last discussion at our last meeting?
Yes, sir. Um, Michael Brooks, Brandon Wallace, and Gene Thomas went through it based on the discussion, I believe, not unless they want to speak to it. I don't know, Brandon, if you'd have anything you want to add to what was done.
We were just trying to incorporate the changes that were a result of the previous meeting. They were kind of outdated. They referenced asphalt coated metal pipe, which is no longer really used. And, um, we're just trying to bring it up to date and to allow the option of using concrete pipe where the, which was in the previous ordinance. You can see that was restricted in the existing ordinance that we have on record.
Thank you.
Reason this was brought up was because we changed out so many metal pipes. They, uh, get run over on the end of them and stop them up. But we think the concrete, I do, I think the concrete would be better, but we're going to see what happens. Anything else?
What, this is pretty much pertaining to just driveways, residential, or just taking into account like commercial too?
Yeah, if you do reference a commercial driveways as well, you know, one of them, ninety-nine percent of them are probably residential.
Yeah.
Okay. Probably all the commercials are already concrete, or will be, I'm sure. Mr. Chairman, I got a question concerning the, uh, this administrative fee, this charge, you know, to, uh, I guess to administer this, uh, go out and check it and everything. Is this, how long has this fee been in effect, or is it something that's kind of antiquated right now? We, is it?
Since we adopted it.
The fee's been there for a long time.
So, do, I mean.
Thirty-two thousand, probably.
Huh?
Thirty-two thousand.
I guess what I'm trying to find out is that, are we really covering our costs as far as what it takes to, the time and, you know, manpower to go out and evaluate this? Uh, is it something?
Well, the, the fees basically, I mean, not fee, but the cost to the applicant is for the pipe cost. Um, but I don't know if there's ever been any discussion as far as recouping any of the cost to have it put in. Is that correct? I don't believe so.
I was talking about this in the discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, as staff, you know, some discussion about that and the questions that were raised, and I understand the city, uh, does an estimate and charges half the equipment and labor costs in addition to the material costs to try to help cover those, those costs of that pipe, Mr. Burs. So that might be something for discussion.
Okay, like I said, if it was implemented back in early two thousand, you know, I mean, uh, everything is going up since that time, you know, wage is going up, uh, cost of gas and all this stuff. So I'm just trying, not trying to say it's where it's a revenue generator, but at least cover our costs of what it's taken us to do it, you know? That's something, just look at that too, you know?
Could I come back with some cost projection or change it? Remend it again. Do that, Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. If, um, the commission has some direction on if that's, you know, you won't have the full cost or whatever, then we can make that change to ordinance. If that's the desire of the commission to add that in.
I'd like to see you make a recommendation based on costs given by the engineering department. That's my, that's my thought.
Got it. Can, we could do.
That's all I'm going to share.
Okay. Is that all? Okay. All right, the aerial flight photography update proposal.
Um, yes, sir. This, this item here is, um, uh, is, as the summary sheet states, we had, uh, the county flown in, uh, two thousand nineteen. I've got two thousand eighteen, but that's when we entered into an agreement, have the county flown for aerial photography. Um, and typically you have this, these flights done about every three years. Uh, sometimes you can go as far, as far as, excuse me, four years. Um, as it mentions there, these photos are very vital with various things, engineering, tax assessor uses it, uh, it's used throughout. It's used on Q public for all types of public and private organizations. And, uh, so this is a proposal to, to fly the county again, uh, this coming January, February. And the total cost for all three years is a hundred and fourteen thousand nine seventy-two sixty. And they allow us to pay it annually, and the annual payment is a little over thirty-eight thousand dollars, if that would be something the commission could, uh, would consider.
So this is an extension of that previous twenty nineteen?
It's a whole new contract, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because, and I'll let, um, Joyce speak to it. And, uh, I believe there, this second contract is, um, better resolution throughout the whole county. Um, the first flight was, I think it was a three inch, six inch, and a nine inch resolution. What that means is, is inside the city, it gives you within a three inch accuracy. Is that correct? I want to make sure I say this right. Then in the, in the doughnut area, it's more of a six inch accuracy area, and then the nine was a little bit less at nine inch. Uh, but this second one is all three six, uh, three inches and six inches in resolution quality. So it's a better quality photograph, so. But you want to speak to it, Joyce? Do you have anything?
They're going to do away with the nine inch.
Yeah, they're doing away with the nine.
They don't do it.
Yeah.
Is this in the budget?
Yes, sir. We got it budgeted. Yes, sir. Sure do.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. Uh, so I guess did we put this out for bid?
No, sir. This was an agreement I believe that they had before. Is that correct? I believe it was. That was before I got here is when this was being worked on. Um, but that's where this is coming from, is what, they had this agreement before with the same company. Is that correct? I can't remember. Yeah.
We had not had a, a bid since nineteen eighty-nine.
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six. We had that last flight before this one. That's a big difference in what's out there.
Okay.
All right, quick question. When you pull up realty and things like that, you can get a video satellite picture normally. We couldn't utilize that that's already out there on the internet?
The, the resolution, you're talking about like, um, like Google Maps, Google Earth? Yeah. I don't believe it's the same resolution. It's not quite the same quality. Yeah.
Okay, but again, we, we didn't put this out for bid.
No, sir, not this time because we're just renewing the contract.
Okay, okay.
They already got a contract. We just got to renew it, go ahead to update it.
Yes, sir.
When this contract was done in two thousand eighteen, it was done on the basis that they would do it for X number of dollars a flight in two thousand nineteen, January and February. And then also, then a part of that contract was in three years, they would do another flight in January and February. So that's why it's not going out for bid. It was done back then as pictometry. Um, they also provide a software called pictometry that the board of assessors, detectives, anybody that has a login to it can actually look at this, this new images. And they can look at it from straight above. They can hit a side view. They look at the side of the house, count the windows in the house, um, all around three sixty on the house. And that's in, uh, I think that's in the urban area. They can do that in three inch. And, um, so when they flew it before, basically in the city, you could get down, around the city and some of the doughnut areas, you can count air conditioning on top of buildings. That's the resolution that you can get to. Um, and as you got further out, the resolution went down and about, um, basically out in the county, you get to about a one inch equals three hundred and thirty foot on the ground. Then it starts to distort, distorting. But in the city area and the, and the doughnut area, you could actually get down to one inch equals fifty, one inch equals twenty feet on that. So, um, that's why it's not coming out for bid, but it was a previous agreement that they would fly it again in three years, um, at that price.
Mr. Chairman, one other question.
Yeah.
Okay, I know this is, uh, the county, you know, but, but the city, the city benefits from this also, right?
They don't have access to our pictometer or any of that.
Okay, that, that's, okay, that answered my question.
Cause they didn't participate last time. They didn't.
Okay, well that.
They don't have access to pictometer as far as I, as I'm aware of.
Okay, but.
And one of the other things too is, uh, still the regional water and sewer authority bought in with the first contract. I, I sent a message out to them to reach out to see if they were interested. I hadn't heard back yet. They still might. Um, so, you know, we'll wait to see on that. But typically, they, anyone that needs that for quality, you know, for engineering and utility service, those kind of things, very valuable.
Right. Okay.
Was this company out of Georgia?
I'm not sure where they're from.
You're not? You're not sure where you're from? Okay. We'll put that on the, Jim. Okay, Old Nichols Highway resurfacing bid awarded.
Brady, will you speak to this for the commission?
Yes, sir. We, we approached the DOT about, uh, resurfacing on Nichols Highway in conjunction with a widening project that they bid out and, uh, are in the process of awarding. And so we put this out to bid to do this along with that widening project. So as the widening is completed, we'll come back over and do, uh, leveling and resurfacing. And it's starting at one fifty-eight and going to, um, Bickley Highway. And, uh, as y'all know, Old Nichols Highway is very narrow currently. So this would help, um, address that. It's been, needed done, to have been done for quite some time. So we're able to save money on the project by working with the DOT, the striping and all that sort of stuff. That we'll do this work before the final striping is done, and it's going to help us save money and try to stretch our, um, T-Splus dollars as far as we can with a single county T-Splus project.
Okay.
Is the DOT going all the way out to Coffee Canyon?
No, sir. Um, they have, uh, safety money with the ALMIG program. The ALMIG funds go out all across the state. And not, um, all of the state, uh, counties, local governments are in the, uh, the match requirement that we have, which is ten percent. Um, some of the counties, if they're, if they don't have the regional T-Splus, they're in a thirty percent requirement. And so every year, those ALMIG funds will end up coming back to the state, and there's additional monies there available, um, to go after for those local governments that have those funds to match.
Yeah, I guess I should have been more direct. We're going one fifty-eight to Bickley Highway.
Yes, sir.
How many more miles is it to the county line?
Four and a half or so.
We can't do all that in one project? Go, go to the county line? How many, like, four miles?
If we wanted to take on the cost of that widening, um, if that would be the desire of the commission to go ahead and do that, then we could. There was, uh, about six miles of widening available through that safety pro, program with the Georgia, Georgia Department of Transportation, which fit this project. And that was the reason for the six miles from one fifty-eight.
Did we already have that on our list as well, and that's the reason we're joining up with the state?
On our single county T-Splus.
We didn't have that last four miles?
Uh, well, if it's this, we could always, uh, spend now and push other projects out.
I just might think it's silly to pave the whole thing and then leave four miles.
Could we do it without widening it? It, it probably needs to overlay all of it. I, I would be for that. Go all the way. But, uh, you say it got to be widened too, though?
Yes, sir.
All the other four miles.
It's narrow as well.
It, it's narrow too.
Yes, sir.
I understand that it needs widening. I'm not really worried about the widening. I just don't see paving a road except for four miles. Even if we don't do the widening, that part of the road needs to be paved too. We need to do it all at one time. Well, we're going to have to come back one day and pave that four miles by itself. And that's going to cost, we already got the equipment and everything going out there. It's going to cost us more. Am I wrong, right?
Uh, yes, sir. You get economy, you get economy of scale with projects. Yes, sir.
Yeah, need to go all the way. What, what is the widening per, per mile? Do you know that off estimate?
Uh, the DOT, um, contract is for about five hundred thousand dollars, and that was six miles.
That put a, uh, widening for six miles was five, about half a million.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So if we wanted to do the other four, you could run those numbers real quick.
Three fifty, three hundred.
And then you'd add another four miles of, uh, resurfacing to that. And that would be what we'd be looking at another.
We'd have to ask God if we can do it or not.
Well, we can look at the budget and see if you want to do that.
My only question is, I thought that, that road was already on the budget. That's the reason we went ahead and agreed to jump on it now while DOT is out there doing their part.
Right.
But I thought it was continuous all the way to county line.
They only had safety money to do the six miles.
I call that the money that we had set aside to do that. Aren't we going to just resurface on new highway in the later?
Yes, sir. You just have to, it would be all local funds for that additional four miles you're talking about. There wouldn't be any DOT participation with that.
But we, it was on our road list, right?
It is our, it is our.
We agreed to move it up so we could do it at the same time DOT did, right?
Right. It is our, on our road list too, sir.
We already had the money set aside to go all the way to Coffee Canyon. That is our part.
It, the, the ALMIG, the, uh, regional month, the single county T-Splus funds come in monthly. So we, we have that money sitting there in that account, but you have all these other projects that everybody wants to try to do and are interested in moving as fast as they can. but you have all these other projects that everybody wants to try to do and are interested in moving as fast as they can. So it's just been, uh, the money is allocated for that, but it has not been taken into the, um, account yet, but it will as that, the, the final, um, what, we got two years left on that, Scott?
Yep.
It'll be, it'll be there eventually, it might not be sitting there right now. We could juggle some things and push some things off if we have to, or use, uh, money from re- from the regional fund to go ahead and pay for that.
Brandon, the reason we're confused, I guess, at least I'm confused, is we sat in here three weeks ago or whatever and voted to go ahead and do this project while it tied in with DOT. To me, that meant that we also allocated the money to finish that project. Am I wrong?
Yeah, I, I.
Well, just like Brandon, like Brandon said, it's on the list to be done, but at the same time, you have to re- we reshuffle projects based on the commission's needs or needs of the public, so.
Well, that's what I mean, I thought we, when we voted that time, we agreed to reshuffle the monies to go there while we could save money with DOT, was that?
Right, right.
Yeah, that's what I thought. This project was, if I understand it, was to take advantage of the extra safety money that DOT found in another part and do it all at one time, right? They had some extra money for safety, so we said, let's jump in with their project.
I don't think that was it, it was one that they were going ahead and doing, and we were adding this to it, basically.
They're working in Nichols Coffee County and they said, while we're close, we're gonna go ahead and do this project we had on the books. And then we talked about it and we voted to go ahead and move this one up to take advantage of the cost savings while everybody's out there.
Right.
To go ahead and get this done, completed. So that, to me, that meant the money that we had set aside for this one should have moved up as well.
Okay.
Now, like I said, I may.
We take a look at it. Do we know, do we know it costs about extra four miles to resurface?
We were just running the numbers real quick and, uh, I think we came up with three hundred and fifty for the
The widening.
widening and, uh, six miles of resurfacing was seven hundred and whatever thousands in there.
Yeah.
So you could run the numbers on that other and come up with a quick estimate based on that.
So it's seven hundred and something thousand for the six mile of resurfacing?
So the proposal we asked for was, I mean, they, they bid on just that portion, they didn't bid on all of it.
Correct.
Yeah, if Coffee County resurfaced and widened that part of the highway, how would they even figure it out?
So, and I, I kinda follow what Tony was saying, so what we need to actually re- widen that out anyhow, could we just do the resurfacing?
I would, it, it needs to be widened as well, it's just as narrow as the other portion.
If you're out there, you might as well widen it. If, I've got a hundred and nineteen thou- a hundred and nineteen thousand a mile. Six divided by the, or the four, seven fourteen divided by the six. And then four extra miles. Right at, right at half a million.
Right at half a million, um.
Four seventy-six.
So the five hundred thousand for the widening for six miles would be what for the, uh, four that's left?
Yep. About three fifty.
There's only a general that we can load on it, at the meeting if we decide on it.
Yeah, roughly about three fifty. For four miles.
Okay, so you'd say there is money that we could do some shuffling around and where we could incorporate this?
Yeah, we could shift it up, yeah, we might, we'd have to, like I said, just switch.
Okay.
Well, I concur with Commissioner Tanner saying that, you know, while we already out there and we already, you know, in that flow, we may as well gonna try to take care of it, you know, while we're out there, cause it's, eventually it's gonna cost more if we have to come back, I'm pretty sure, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I wonder if that road does that, that's bad road, I mean, it needs, it needs some work done on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Brandon. CSX Rice Yard approved drainage improvement.
Yep.
Now, is that the one out there that?
Yes, sir, yes, the one that.
Go to Kettle Creek with it?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
Brandon, can you speak to this again? Make it turn out to be your show, since you know more about the project.
You know what that ditch is, are they, they want, what they want to do, widen it or just?
Uh, they wanna add some pipes to the, uh, there's an existing drainage line that, that's there, and they want to increase the size. They had, uh, several different alternates, but I think their, uh, the most alternate that they wanted to go with for them was alternate three, which was to go with two sixty-inch pipes under the new alignment and then a double line of forty-eight inch arch pipes under, uh, Minnesota Avenue, which is the county, uh, right away there.
Right. Okay. Did it stay a little bit on good?
Um, Scott, what was the?
Um, I spoke to them, I believe it was la- last week, yeah, last week, and, um, they said that they didn't see a problem with them doing it under the, the new alignment, the putting it under their highway, but they said they wanted to know what, how we felt and what the commission's desire on that was to do the same thing under, uh, Minnesota Avenue.
I wonder how much more water is gonna be thrown into Kettle Creek?
No more than it's sealed already there.
Huh?
No more than it normally is. What they trying to do is put it in a ditch versus all over the woods. Build improvement. And if they gonna pay for this project, everything.
Yes, sir.
And they clean out the canal, yeah.
The one thing this question for me is in that study, they don't address, uh, Kettle Creek or the ditch that's from the end of the pipe at Minnesota Avenue to Kettle Creek or that property that's there, which is private property. I don't see anything in the study that they gave us about that, where they addressed that at all, on that outfall. There's no drainage easement that we were able to find.
Is there easement, there, there is an easement on that?
No, sir, nothing that we were able to find on that.
No.
Chairman.
Okay.
Uh, Brandon, okay, and I'm just trying to, I guess wrap my head around this whole thing about the pipe, they come up installing some bigger pipes to get water, I guess, to sit Rice Yard and not to flow from Rice Yard.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the water's got to go somewhere?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so they're going under Minnesota Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Alright, when it comes from out, from under Minnesota Avenue, what did that water, what did that pipe, did it go into the creek?
Yes, sir, there, it's not very, it's about two thousand and, uh, at least about two thousand feet from the end of the pipe on Minnesota Avenue. If you went straight into the creek, Kettle Creek behind there. Kettle Creek runs and, you know, kinda meanders and goes very close to Virginia Avenue, which is just downstream of where they're talking about turning this water into Kettle Creek. And, uh, Virginia Avenue is a known flood-prone area that shows up on the flood maps.
So wouldn't they just kinda make the situation a little worse then, if, if you got more water coming in there?
Yes, sir, um, it, that makes sense to me, that water's gotta go somewhere, like you're saying, and it seemed like it would go into Kettle Creek, which is already flood-prone area now.
Okay, so would they have an option, like, instead of what they're proposing to go under the highway and, you know, get the water, to have like, create detention ponds?
Yes, sir.
On their property?
I don't know if they would have enough room on their property, but there's a lot of undeveloped land adjacent to this.
That could.
And between their property and, uh, the new Balastra Highway, that, that's undeveloped, that should be available for them.
Because that's pretty much the whole purpose of detention ponds, is to try to retain that water and then let it flow, flow, right?
Yes, sir.
For absorb, however, because it seems like to me it's, we, you know, we've already got a semi-problem, but now we're gonna have a major problem, you know, with more water coming out there.
Do y'all know historically, Michael, how many times they've had to do rescues in that area on Virginia? How many would you guess, Jonathan, in the last ten years, do you know how many times y'all had to go in there? So five or six times in the last ten years or so that they've had flooding problems out there on Virginia Avenue.
You mean when it come like a hard, hard rain, they have to go in there and actually rescue people out?
Rescue homeowners because the water level gets so high. Does it come into their house, Jonathan, or just where they can't get out?
Uh, they don't get in their house, they face where they can't travel or can't move. It's the roads, they don't have the roads.
So now we're talking about putting more water in there now?
Yeah, that's what CSX had proposed.
I'll have to defend that a little bit, we, we ain't gonna put no more water in there. Because, Mr. Burke, what it is, it backs up and, and if they increase them pipe, that water will get gone quicker. We, we gonna, we gonna shed the water off faster, I seen the water knee-deep out in the pine trees on that side and it takes a while for it to go down. Well, that, what they gonna do is an improvement.
Wow.
It's gonna, it's gonna help us, it's gonna let the water shed on, and that's what we need, I think, is, uh, we need some improvement on that ditch.
Yeah, I, I can, I follow you in part, but the water's got to go somewhere.
Yeah, it's gotta go to creek. If you put it in a retention pond, when the retention pond gets full, it goes straight to creek. It comes out the backside, it's over, out there in the flat wood. See, all the ponds will fill up when it go to raining like it does now.
Is CSX gonna improve the creek?
No, they don't have to.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, it's gonna be the same diameter, all of it, it is now.
Yes, a creek will be just like it is, I'm sure, but you're gonna have.
Their study goes to the south side of Minnesota Avenue, basically.
Yes, sir.
And anything past Minnesota north, there, they didn't, that wasn't studied.
They, that would be almost impossible, right, Trent, to try to do anything in the run of the creek itself?
As far as doing any improvements in the current creek pressure, the one thing they probably should do for you guys is provide a no-rise certificate that the water level might rise once they increase the flow rate into Kettle Creek.
Yeah, and this is the gentleman name, I didn't catch your name.
Trent, come on up.
Yes, my name's Trent Long with TR Long Engineering. So basically what happens, uh, when this stormwater comes through, what they're doing is, uh, they are, uh, increasing capacity in this pipe to keep the water level from getting up in the Rice Yard, so that they don't have electrical cables or any of their, uh, equipment failing. Cause they've seen an increase in the, uh, failures in the Rice Yard since the, uh, new alignment of the redway. So what happens is when they open up the water underneath, uh, eighty-four or the new, the new alignment in Minnesota Avenue, that water's gonna get to Kettle Creek faster. But we're not gonna let it out under the next rows any faster. So that water then is gonna build up into the ponds, kinda like what a, uh, detention pond does. So when your detention pond gets to rush water, water level rises and then the control structure lets the water out as you go a little bit longer, so. In fact, you're having the same thing happening on a large scale. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna let a lot more water out, so Kettle Creek is likely to get a rise. Now, I have to say this, the storage capacity in Kettle Creek is pretty large. So, you're, as a matter of fact, the flood, uh, line is, is way down in the creek on Kettle, Kettle Creek, so you've got a large capacity there. So, uh, what I would say to the county is, you know, before we say yes, uh, railroad, go ahead and let's make these improvements. Get a no-rise certificate that is forwarded to FEMA that says the improvements that they're making is not gonna increase the flood elevation downstream. That way you've protected your citizens downstream and you've been able to protect your citizens that live on, uh, Virginia Avenue that are having the, uh, the problems. So you can go through, and there are studies and there are models that are built to be able to do that, and, you know, they should be able to get a company, cause they got a pretty big company to do the, the work for them, and they did a good job uh, with the limits of what they did, but they just need to take it a little bit further downstream to prove to the county that you're not gonna hurt the county's infrastructure. So, I think it's a possibility that everything's gonna be fine, but, you know, the minute you don't get the no-rise certi- certification, then, you know, whether it is an increase or not, there's gonna be a perceived increase, and they're gonna be perceived as, uh, having caused more flooding. So you kinda need to make sure you have that to protect you, protect railroad, protect everybody involved.
So how, how enforceable is that?
Uh, FEMA is the one that enforces it.
Okay.
Yes, sir, and, and it, it gets reviewed at a federal level instead of just at a local or state level.
Uh, I'd have to agree with Trent because somewhere down the line, we would be liable for the folks who live out there, you know, insurance policies and flood insurance and so forth, and we, you know, you go add that, but I would think that's some, you know, possibility.
The extra step for them is more of an inconvenience than it is anything just because of the time it takes to do it. Cause it takes several, it takes a long time to get a no-rise certificate done. But in this case, that's what I would recommend that you do, is get it, get them to give you a no-rise certificate. Especially when you look at some of the things that are, uh, potential two hundred and fifty-six percent, uh, incre- increase in capacity. That doesn't mean you're gonna get a two hundred and fifty percent increase in your runoff, but you got a lot of capacity increase, um, allowing that water to get off of it. Now, that also doesn't, that just takes care of quantity, uh, volume and how fast it all comes. Cause a lot of your drainage is also about timing, when the stormwater gets there. Um, so that's, that's a big part in stormwater drainage. Now, the other part is quality, so, you know, we're gonna be allowing the water to come on faster from the rail yard, so, you know, the the idea of a, uh, stormwater retention pond before it gets into the system is appealing. Um, because then that allows you to have a point to catch something that's happening or you're, you're able to uh, have a little bit of stormwater treatment of the water quality before it gets all the way down to Kettle Creek. Cause, of course, increasing the runoff, uh, does a great job of helping the railroad get the water off of the rail yard, but if there's a problem, it gets it to Kettle Creek that much faster.
So we, we do have some environmental controls that we can put in to affect or require them to do?
The biggest.
Because if you have a big spill out there and you got a rain, it's gonna be at my house, which is over there by Stanton Avenue, before you can even react.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, no.
Or Albany Avenue.
You're exactly right. Um, unfortunately, you don't have a, a drainage ordinance that gives you, uh, the environmental regulations. And, um, I'm not, I did not see a flood control ordinance, so you may wanna look at, looking into those two things to give yourself those kind of capabilities to, uh, monitor and, uh, reg- regulation's a bad way to say it, regulation is sometimes a flawed word. But it gives you a little bit of authority over what's happening to you, so that you do have a way to, you know, protect yourself and not have things done to you. Hope that makes sense.
Trent, well, we'd rather mitigate than, since this apparently would be a new project, are they, are they, or are they not covered on the city stormwater ordinance?
It should be, uh, they're in the city limits, right?
Yeah.
So they would, they would be covered.
They can require the retention ponds and artificial wetlands for, for filtration?
Yes, sir.
I mean, does anybody know if the city is, would enforce that or counties on its own or?
I do not know that answer, do you know?
Haven't gotten that far. My concern, I mean, twenty years ago, I used to get calls from, when I was on commission, from employees who were having to work of boxcars full of garbage, medical waste, crap coming from New York, going through Rice Yard to Alabama. And all kind of stuff goes out there, I mean, I, I'm very hesitant about what law with this because of the quality of water, the hazardous waste that could be there and putting it down Kettle Creek and in the river. So like Tony, for me to vote for it, there would have to be some very tight controls over the quality of water.
Yes, sir.
And that's where FEMA comes in and?
Well, FEMA is only gonna be quantity, they're not gonna be quality.
So hold down the quality as far as they make the enforceability of it?
That's really gonna come.
I know they have monitoring wells out on Hamilton Avenue. Would this be, does EPD be concerned with this, um, do they have, would have to have permits for this kind of thing?
So.
I don't know.
I, you know, we hadn't looked into a lot as far as whether they have an industrial permit with this or not. So, you know, I hadn't really done a lot in investigating what EPD is requiring them to do. I do know that the railroad does play by a different set of rules than.
Right.
Most other industries. So there may be some things that, that I don't know about that, so I don't, I don't claim to know all.
Right.
But I, I do know that, you know, one of the things that you do have in your control is requesting a no rise certification on Kettle Creek, uh, to be able to protect your citizens downstream.
Right.
And that is one step that you can take, and hopefully the city can take some other steps as far as stormwater quality goes.
But it's important to find out where the city would stand on this.
Yeah, I wanna ask Scott, have, have you talked with the city, have they said anything?
We notified them, but I don't think to, as of yet, we've heard anything from them, unless Brandon or anyone else has.
So we need to, we need to kinda be on the same page, you know?
Very possible. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. I don't know about that. Cause I don't think they gonna increase the water that much. They just want it to go to them highways back. You know? They gotta be moved. We'll put it on the agenda. All right, we got the next one. EMS Life Pack, fifteen equipment purchase request.
Lot of time, can you able to speak?
What's that?
Might be a little tattered.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, this is kind of, uh, certainly is in follow-up with the, uh, Captain's Unit and Community Outreach Unit that we talked about previously. And this is a foundational piece of equipment that needs to be on there. We do, we do have a vehicle, a temporary vehicle. Uh, but this is a, a piece of equipment that we have to have on there. It, it's the defibrillator, but it, it also does all diagnostics, measures oxygen and carbon dioxide in the blood. Um, crucial to have, uh, particularly during these, uh, this COVID epidemic, or endemic, whatever it's become now. But, uh, this is a, a piece of equipment we have to have on there, and, uh, we, we have it on all ambulances and it would have to be on that unit to make medical decisions, and to be able to respond if they were to get onto a, a scene with a cardiac arrest, or heart attack, or anything along those lines.
Scott, did we talk about funding this through the President Biden Recovery Funds for help?
Uh, we could, uh, we have it budgeted in Splos. We can take it out of either one, but using the, the ARPA funds might be the way to go. Yes, sir.
I mean, help issues are part of that program.
And it definitely could come into play for, you know, COVID patients and so forth.
I mean, I, I think that's the way to go.
Yes, sir.
It could come out of that COVID money?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Not out of the budget.
Right.
Yeah.
And this is, uh, just to recap, I guess, at one of the meeting you came up, instead of, uh, an ambulance going to the scene, this is where someone would make a decision somewhere that.
Yes, sir.
A captain that's trained, I guess, could go rather than sending an ambulance.
And just to give you a little update on that, uh, we haven't been able to start it because mainly of staffing issues. Uh, we do have a vehicle. When we have this equipment, everything else we have. So we have the other equipment and supplies that we need on there. But we've had, even though all positions are filled, we've had a lot of illness, a lot of absent, absent employees, uh, which can go on a pretty good long time when they're dealing with, with COVID issue, possible COVID issues. And we've had, our, our maximum call volume per month is, is, has been about eight hundred and fifty. And in August, we roared through that to about nine hundred and twenty-three. So, yeah, I can't pull an ambulance down just to get a single person on a first response vehicle. So I mean, I, I've given some updates, but what's delaying us is definitely personnel at this point. Uh, if we can settle back down to like a seven hundred and fifty call a month, then, then we'll, we'll have the personnel to do it. But, but we can't sacrifice any ambulances to do it, particularly with that level of call volume. It's been really amazing.
Yeah.
For a long, what percentage of the calls are from the COVID, whatever it is, virus or whatever?
Um, probably thirty percent.
Thirty?
We've definitely had more this time, this surge that we've had, um, and, and more non-cases. Uh, but, but I, I'd probably say thirty to forty percent at the most, but, uh, still way higher than any, any in past times during the past surges that we had. By all evidence, it has peaked and is declining, uh, knock on wood. But, but I mean, that aspect's declining now, uh, unless it were to turn around. But, uh, it's still, still good, uh, probably four to five calls per day. But, uh, like the big difference is these are, these are non-COVID cases already diagnosed.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Any other?
What kind of vehicle y'all got set aside for this?
We got a, a, a Crown Vic from the Sheriff's Department, a, a previous Sheriff's Deputy Vehicle. And that's temporary. Barry is working on a Tahoe engine replacement in one of the Tahos they have. But I don't know the timetable on that, or how that's going. Barry, do you?
We have a little trouble finding an engine port right now. We've got it ready to put together, just in time to get it over the need.
Like this car's, this car will be fine. Uh, I mean, it, it should allow us to launch this if, if the other conditions permit.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think it'd be a good thing.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perry.
Put that one on there. Okay, eight, water main relocation on Smith Road paving project.
We, uh, this, this item here, um, was put on the agenda for discussion and possible action, uh, with the Smith Road paving project. There's a water main, uh, that would be under the asphalt. And there's been some discussion of whether we would, uh, ask for, uh, Satilla to, uh, relocate those, relocate that water main. And, um, so it's, we're bringing it to the commission to, to, uh, give us some direction on what your thoughts are. Uh, one of the things that I, I passed out before the meeting was, uh, agreement, um, between Ware County and Satilla Regional Water Sewer, uh, on all the parameters of that arrangement relationship. So I didn't know if there was any thoughts from the commission on what you would want to do. We're gonna need to go ahead and try to get that scheduled before we get out there to get it, get it paid. We had previously done this before on Cypress, uh, where the water lines was, uh, water main removed out from under the pavement.
We paid for that ourselves, didn't we?
Paid for the materials to do that, we did on Cypress.
So out there on Smith Road, we gonna try to make them pay for all of it?
It's up to the commission how you stand. I mean, we have an agreement. I don't know if, uh, I'm, I'm, it's been some time since we've looked at that and studied over it. But, uh, it does mention in there without, the, the attorney may have some comments, but it does say that the county can request for those lines to be relocated.
This is an agreement from two thousand and three. I thought I remembered that there was a more recent one, but perhaps it was just discussed and not put into place. But I would like to do a little further research on this before, just to make sure this is the latest that we have between.
Yeah, my dad was chairman then, that's been a while. I think when we, when South Street came up, we went through the same thing, and it was disagreement that managed utility projects in the Ware County right of ways, the cost of any project to be paid in whole or part by the authority. That was the agreement when the previous county commission gave away the water department to this authority. So, and I've always taken the stand that they've got an agreement and they should pay for it. But I think it was negotiated that, like Steve said, we paid for.
I think that's what I'm recalling. Yeah, there, there wasn't maybe a new agreement, but there was some negotiation, and that's what I had in my mind. That's right. I recall, I recall that one, yeah.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, and our rationale, Scott, or Brandon, for relocation of the water main is so that once we pay that roll, you won't have to go back and get a water main break or something like that, or where you won't have to go back and cut to the road. That's the whole purpose of it.
Yes, sir.
And I guess now would be the opportune time to move it. Plus that, I understand that that water main has been there for a while, right?
It's been there for a while.
And the material, I guess, maybe was a different type of.
Yeah, I'll be, I think, Mr. Chairman, you said that's about one sixty class pond?
Probably one sixty, yeah.
It's supposed to be some of the cheapest you can buy.
So it's inevitable that sooner or later, we gonna have a break there, and probably be right after we get through putting the last bit of asphalt down. Have a break.
Soon as that roller rolls across the library.
Yeah, yeah, so. And it's, and I'd be the time to do it and accept. But like Jared said, if that's what the agreement states, then that's what we have to make a decision whether we wanna hold them right to it, or wanna come to some type of compromise as far as a share, you know, costs in there, whatever. Cause we are the ones that's requesting it.
Right, that's right.
We won't relay it, I think. So the cost you're talking about, we is a hundred and ninety thousand to relocate it?
Yes, sir.
That'd probably just be a estimate.
Is this a, this is contractor's cost, I mean, price?
Yes, sir, that would be like a huge cost. That's cover, equipment, labor, material, everything.
This is a total cost?
Pardon?
Materials and labor.
That's just an estimate.
Yeah.
It's an estimate based on, uh, or.
Gotcha.
Ain't but eight thousand feet of it, is it? Eight, eighty-seven hundred feet.
Yes, I believe so.
Seven thousand. Okay.
Has anybody talked to the, you got any final words from the, um, water department?
I haven't heard back from them, yes, sir.
Yeah, I talked to, uh, to them, and they said they'd, uh, they'd be willing to do whatever we had.
Are they in a way we could kinda, I guess, assist as far as offset some of the costs, or is there any in kind, or? That's something we don't wanna get into.
Well, uh, probably the same type of arrangement we had before, but I don't know if their own forces will do that or not. I don't know if they would contract that out, or have their own folks do it or not.
They did contract out Cypress Street.
They did, that's what I'm calling.
Did the county pay some on Cypress Street?
The material cost.
They paid for the material, didn't? Okay. We'll talk about that then. Anything else on that? Any commission items?
We got a couple. Uh, where are we at on Pascal Road? What was the final outcome out there?
Is that?
That's where they couldn't, they had the curves that were blocked by all the trees and things. We were gonna go out and see if it was part of our roadway.
I'm on the search. Yes, sir. They were cut, cause I believe you did it within just a few days.
So that's been handled? And Slash Pine, Elmer Thrift, Rale Road, and Banks Road?
That was handled first?
Yeah.
So, since we're talking about, and I'm glad you brought up talking about Pascal, cause I saw Mr. Long, Mr. Mr. Little John here. So, is it an improvement from what was out there before, Mr. Little John?
It's one section that they did, but they haven't been agreed on the other part of it, that's first of all.
So it haven't been completed? And I think the last time, it was something about someone, a property owner didn't want a lot, the candy to cut, or something like that.
Yeah, because of the right of way, but what section is that?
Michael, was that, was there one, was there a landlord out there that didn't want something done?
Yes, it was right across the street from, from what you put on the, the yard right away.
Is that what you're talking about?
That's part of it.
Is it?
Yeah.
You done all we could do then?
Yeah.
So the landlord, they just, I mean, they say why? Just don't want you.
May I say, is this property you want to own, or is it something?
Is the issue y'all are having, cause y'all brought a couple of issues. One of them was the curves, and the other one was the drainage. Is it the curve still being where you can't see around them, or is it the drainage?
Curves was, was chilled out a little bit, but still part of the grading. Ever since first of August, like I say, it's been dark and potable. Right in front of my house, there's a little trench that didn't have since the last hard rain. So I haven't seen a greater than on that end. First of, middle of August.
So what on that, Michael, I guess, for the grading and stuff?
Can I find some real quick, same to grade, just grade that area, grade everything from Chancetown, that area all the way to the swamp road down past Chairman's down there. That's like it covers the whole area. Rain we had, I know the gray went in there right after the other day, graded the road. Dug some pieces in there, got the inmates to clean the bushes, but, I mean, as far as being right back, no, it hasn't been that. I mean, that same grader's covering everything else too. Is he to pull it from somewhere, bring it back in there and regrade? Or do you keep going, you know, making your rounds like we do, and come back and ramble to it?
So what about the pipe? Cause we said something about the pipe was small and.
Well, we got a pipe that's gotta be replaced down at the curve, down past him that we're working on, it locates, calling, and stuff like that. It's scheduled to have work. But the ditch work, we've already dug, you know, from the corner, from the front of our house on down to the branch where it runs off.
And while I got the floor, are you through, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask about the minutes? Can we go ahead and get those so we can get them changed before we get, uh, August fourth minutes? Uh, let's see if I can find. Anyway, in there, it, it talks about what needed to be done if we reduce the millage rate by the department heads cutting projects.
Right.
The cut part was left out.
Okay.
And then you embarrassed, uh, out of the chairman, cause down in the bottom on, uh, I think August ninth, it says Chairman Tanner.
Oh.
Instead of Chairman Thrift. So if you make those changes, I'm good with all the rest of it.
My eyes were probably crossed by that, um.
We got a promotion torn in the dirt.
And that was the August ninth, August ninth meeting.
Yeah. August, August ninth or August fourth, I'm sorry.
First one was August fourth.
Okay.
Talking about, talking about the reduction in the budget.
Yep.
In the millage. The other one was August ninth.
Okay.
The chairman's name got mixed up with mine down at the bottom.
Anything here, pardon? I got one thing, is the light situation that we get straightened out at the new rail lines. George Power putting lights in out there at the intersection, where they just opened the line up.
As far as having them installed?
Yeah, where they gonna put the streetlights in.
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know. Do you know, Brandon, if they have?
They, uh, they said they had ordered, uh, fixtures for that. They, uh, they said they had to order the fixtures for that. And they said they were experiencing longer lead times on stuff right now. And, uh, I asked for an update last week. You never heard back from the guy, so I was, I was sending another email. I believe you asked me and tried to find out if he's got a better idea for delivery on those fixtures.
Where are we at? Jamestown on Tanner Lane and Win Clay?
Win Clay, yeah.
Okay, on, uh, Davis Avenue, everything's been turned into the Corps of Engineers. So let's, let me kind of back up and make sure everybody's on the same sheet of music. So when we're looking at the new alignment, uh, Tanner Lane over to Win Clay, uh, we have a wetland permit up along the railroad tracks and what we're in the process of doing is changing all the credits in the wetland permit we have up by the railroad track to the piece that goes between Win Clay and, uh, Tanner Lane. So all that's been submitted to the Corps of Engineers for approval and changing that wetland permit. However, there is some suit in Arizona that have put a moratorium on issuing any permits under the current rules. So we're experiencing a delay because of a suit between, I think it's an Indian tribe in Arizona and the Corps of Engineers. We're hoping that they're gonna go back and be able to permit us under the two thousand fif- fifteen rules, which we will be fine. But it is causing us a delay, uh, because of that. So what my question is and what I'm trying to find out, um, I need to do bridge foundation inspections where I send a truck out there and do some boring so that I know how to design the bridge. But in doing that, I gotta send a truck out there and clear some trees to get to the bottom, especially from the Win Clay side. And I don't know whether I can do that under my wetland permit or not. And so we're kind of on hold doing our bridge foundation inspections until we can find out if we can get the truck down in there to do the, we call the bridge foundation inspe- investigation, the BFI. You'll hear that a lot when you're talking to D O T. So if you hear me say BFI, that just means I'm checking on what the ground's gonna do and how much it's gonna hold my bridge. So, um, as soon as I know that, I can go ahead and decide and make a recommendation to you whether it's worth the, the risk to go ahead and do the BFIs before we get approval from the Corps. You know, we've been trying to take the conservative approach of not spending all that money until we got approval from the Corps on that wetland permit so that we didn't, we were not being reckless with the county's money on that. So once I find out a little bit more whether I can do the BFIs with the, uh, wetland situation the way that it is, then I can make the recommendation. Other than that, we're kind of on hold until the Corps decides to issue us a permit. But everything is at the Corps and we're just in a wait mode.
How would they do BFI?
Well, BFIs, by the time I, you know, I gotta, of course I said. I think it's a fifty thousand dollar ticket item. So it usually takes a good thirty, forty-five days to, you know, get things pushed in, get the truck out there, do the, uh, cores and the drillings and then get back to the, they get it back to the lab, do all the testing and generate the report. So, you know, just, that's, I need the time and I'll need the holdup from the wetlands to be able to do it, but I also don't wanna be foolish and mess up something with our wetland permit. So I hope you understand the quandary that I'm in. So trying to make sure we make the most conservative and, you know, I wanna get it done as quickly as I can, but I also don't want to, uh, jeopardize what we're doing either. I hope I answered the question.
You did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe I need to just be quiet now.
So be you.
I think that. How many y'all from Jamestown heard that? I had several calls last month about that. Win Clay Road. You taking any more? Any more items from the commission? County manager, you got any?
Yes, sir. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention or, or speak on is the, we, a few meetings ago, uh, Mr. Barry Tanner, uh, came up, met with commission about, uh, the ball field. And from what I understand, I think they were able to raise more money for, uh, for what they wanted to donate to the project. And so because of the situation where we would have to bid that project, um, and it would be going on our property, the county's property, uh, we'd be responsible for all the, all the particulars and the maintenance and those sort of things. Then we'd fall under our policy to, so we'd have to bid it. But we don't know from a county side how much money we're gonna have to put in the project, commission wouldn't know unless we bid the project. Um, now, I know we've got the estimates, but until we bid it, we really don't know. Um, I was mentioning to, um, Brandon a few days ago that we might want to try to secure some, uh, design specs and plans to build that field and put it out for bids and see what bids we get so we know exactly what kind of money we're looking at. Cause right now we're, I know he had a, an estimate for around, around half a million, I think, what that, right, billion? And so based on what they collected, you know, it could be, we don't know exactly how much the county would have to put in the project.
Right.
At this point. Um, so what I was gonna suggest is we try to get the administration side and do the, do the bidding process, see where those bids come back at. And then it would give something for the commission to go on so we'd know what, what we're having to put into it. Uh, there was some discussion about us providing some in-kind services and been doing the earthwork, um, and so forth, but I believe the, the information we got back and contractor is, you know, they're, they don't like that idea because, you know, the warranties and those kind of things. And typically they're specialized in doing that type of field development and work. So, um, we probably would just need to bid the whole project out and see what that gives us. And that's what I suggest we do so we can get moving. Hopefully we're able to get it done for, uh, next season. But y'all also play foul ball too, right?
That's right.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay. So I just wanted to throw that out, see what the commission thought, and then we can just go from there.
Hey, would they be, uh, uh, or Scott, would there be additional cost of maintenance on that field, on that special field?
Yeah, Barry might know more than I would, but I would imagine so.
A different maintenance? I mean, is that gonna cost? Do, do you know about that?
What we know so far is that they've got a machine that comes with one bid. And it's the same kind of machine that Pierce County has and they're planning on doing the same kind of routine maintenance and they basically just run that machine across the, the field once a month to keep it in shape. That's what I understand. Now, there'll be some if you're, you know, play after the game, if you have some, uh, some trash pickup or that kind of thing, but we'd gladly do that kind of thing to keep it, you know, clean on a regular basis. Nothing extensive to what we know and what Pierce County's told us based on what they're getting and all the other folks that are getting the same return, nothing major on maintenance part.
Anybody up?
Like I said, I think once we get the bids, then we can kind of see where we are.
Yeah. And I, we should, and we should be much closer to getting, getting to that point, you know, as far as having to get through that process.
So we've got some specs and bid it?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's me.
I know we, like I said, but I know we got, or they got the, the proposal, uh, quote, uh, from a contractor, but because we have to bid it, then we don't know. It could go anywhere from half a million to a million. We don't know until we bid it. So that'd be reasonable.
We did get a second one in that was twenty-five thousand dollars less than the one we got, but to your point, you're, you guys are the experts.
Yeah.
Okay. And we got another one out there pending.
Yeah. And that'd get us further down the road.
Right.
You know, and to this, for this to come to a fruition.
Okay. All right, we can do that. Any more? You got anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. Now, your motion, that journey?
Thank you, Mr. John.
Hold in favor.
All right.
Make the journey.
We done did the uh pledge of allegiance, everything, let's get the meeting started. We're gonna go to the, we gotta get in the item frame. Approve the minutes. Okay, public hearing on August the fourth, call meeting August the fourth, work session tonight, regular meeting on the night. They called me, we can do all that.
And that's, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that's with making the revisions that Commissioner Tanner pointed out, and I will make those.
Make those corrections, okay, alright. Yeah, I hear a motion to.
So move, Mr. Chairman, we approve the minutes of August, public hearing August the fourth, the call meeting August the fourth, the work session August the ninth, the regular meeting August the ninth, and the call meeting of August twelfth, twenty twenty one.
I'll second, second, okay, any discussion on it, huh, everything alright? Let's hear a vote. Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Barnard?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, alright. County property disposal bid award. Okay. Uh. Do I hear a motion on it? Are we accepting or not?
Can we read the bid, uh, Mr. Moore, for the record?
Yes, sir.
Also the appraisal price of it.
I'm sorry?
And also the appraisal.
Okay.
Did you get, you got, want a copy of it? He's got it.
Okay, yeah, um, I, Russell H. Lee, do hereby bid sixty-five thousand dollars for the property on Gordon Street, from the courthouse way across Georgia, Ware County. Um, sixty-five thousand dollars is the bid, and he included a five percent uh deposit. And appraisal uh from Rollins Appraisals is, in total amount, is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, God, did this thing go out? Uh, did you think it was, I mean, did it, was it fair out?
Well, I actually bid, I actually advertised twice, uh, the first time I did it in legal section, and got no bids, uh, for four weeks, bid, uh, advertised four weeks, and then I did it again as a display ad, a block ad.
Yeah.
Uh, for additional four weeks, or maybe even five, I can't remember, uh, the second time.
I know, I saw it, I saw, I saw it several times and things, but I. Come on. I sure thought we'd had more bid on it, nobody wasn't interested in it. So what do we wanna do about it?
Commissioners, um, a move that the single bid be rejected, um, with, my reason is that it's not anywhere close to the praise value, and there seems to be some question that some of the courts could use that building, I think, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Barnard has talked to him, so I think I'm making a motion that it be rejected, and then we go from there.
I'll second it. I have a motion to reject it, my second. I hear a vote.
Let's discuss on it.
You want to discuss?
Yeah, just, just for clarification, as you stated, uh, courts have said they may be able to utilize that building, uh, is that what I'm hearing?
I know several months ago, I talked with Justice Bobby, he took over Drug Court, you know, they had, holding it now on the second floor of the courthouse, and there's lots of traffic in and out through the courthouse at seven, eight o'clock at night, you know, drug men going over reporting and stuff like that. I believe it'd be a good idea to move them over there, that way we shut the courthouse down at five o'clock. Won't have people running all over the place over there.
Other words, what you're saying now, we decided we're gonna keep that.
That's what the motion was, to reject the bid.
Mr. Attorney? I mean, Commissioner Barnard can talk to the court and see if you go from there. To me, it's, it's just not enough of the appraised value to sell it at this point.
Ms. Attorney, do we need to vote on whether we're accepting the bid, and then later discuss about possibly what we're gonna do with it, or do we need to say whether we are accepting the bid, and are we gonna put it back out to bid, or are we denying the bid?
At a, at a minimum right now, I think what we're looking for is a motion to either accept or reject the bid. If you also would like to add in, you know, an additional provision that we've decided to keep the property instead of sell it, you know, that is an additional provision that could be added in, but it's not absolutely necessary.
Another question, can we do one where we say we don't accept the bid, we're gonna put it back out, see what we get, but in the meantime, we can utilize it for the court system and make a decision later on?
Certainly, it's, it's county's property under the purview of the Board of Commissioners, so, you know, whatever you all deem best as fiduciaries for the county for that property, that certainly would be in, within your purview to do so.
Well, you just made a motion to reject the bid, so that's what we're gonna, either reject the bid or accept it, one of the two, okay.
We've got a motion and a second on the table to reject the bid, yes, sir.
Right.
Aye. Do I hear a vote? Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
I vote aye. Second.
There was a no.
Okay, okay. No. Okay, estate ordinance revision, yard debris burning, Georgia Burn Permit Service. Okay.
You can just get it right here, if you want to give him that check.
Oh, yeah. There you go, Russell, I'm sorry, there you go, bud.
Do I hear a motion on that?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, any discussion on it?
What do we, what do we, what's the motion to do?
To approve the ordinance revision for the yard debris burning.
Ordinance revision.
To Georgia Burn Permit Services.
Yeah, how we gonna revise it now, is it gonna be?
Yes, it, it, it references the Georgia Forestry Commission for the burn permits, and now it will reference the, uh, the automated system, the Georgia Burn, um, permit service.
Alright, it won't change anything about a burn, and all this is, is, is it, we're gonna have an automated system.
Correct.
That you call in, and you get a permit.
State of Forestry, George Forestry, they'll just go through this system here.
But we gotta pay for this one now, the county gonna pay?
Yes, sir.
Seven thousand dollars a year, right?
Yes, sir, up to seven, depending on how many we get.
Forty-seven percent. Can't say anything, but now we gotta pay for it.
So as I understand it, last meeting, we approved using this service.
That's correct.
And today, we're moved, we're, we're changing the wording to places in the agreement.
That's right, the ordinance that references that, so it's in our code of ordinances of who they contact, who provides that permit, basically.
Right, that's what we're changing, away from Georgia Forestry.
Correct, yes, sir.
To this Georgia Burn Permit Services.
Gotcha.
What you said, Dave, we couldn't do it in-house, our, our locals could not have done that.
Yeah, you just, we'd have to bring someone on to be able to answer the phone all the time, and then you'd have to have a system developed so you can track them.
Yeah.
But this company already has everything in place.
Oh, yeah, I see, we couldn't have done it at our apartment.
You'd have to have someone there at the, at the phone at all times, basically, definitely during probably the daylight hours.
Well, they there most of the time, ain't they? Our, our garden. I don't see why they couldn't do that, but. It cost us money.
As I say, it's something we could go back, if we find out it's not working to our advantage, then we can go back and change it, you know?
That's a lot of money every year. We got a motion and a second, can we get a call? Can we do away with it if we, if we do?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think the question that you're speaking to is, the vote that was taken at the last meeting was on, you know, whether to contract with this company to, to provide the service, and to answer your question, yes, you know, that would be, um, once that contract has played out, and you see what service you're getting, you know, the amount you're paying, and if you deem that to be worthwhile, or if you'd like to make a change, you certainly can do that in the future. Then what's before the board right now, and what the motion on the table is, is to revise Ware County's ordinance to no longer reference Georgia Forestry, but to reference this new company that you've contracted with. And I think we've got a motion and a second on that.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Alright. Aerial flash. Photography, update proposal. Now, we wanna update that, I hear a motion.
Motion for approval, Mr. Mayor, um, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, now that they did a discussion on it.
I've got one, I think we went, what, about ten or twelve years without getting anything updated in the county, didn't we?
That's correct, I think that, what I wanna say was closer to about fourteen years, it was a long time, yes.
And now we've had it done in two thousand nineteen. Two and a half years later, we getting it done again, why can't we space it out, another couple more years?
You could, the only problem is, and I, I would, I would want the attorney to look at this, in the agreement, it basically says that if, if it, if it's not kept updated, then we lose access to the photography that was done previously. That I don't know, I need to.
Just like we would have bought that photography.
That's correct, yeah, I would, I would see it as a deliverable, um, but I would need to check into that, see, yes, sir.
And I believe, um, that I made, you threw a second.
Oh, you threw, go ahead.
Yeah.
You threw?
I threw.
Yeah. Go ahead. Was it something about, uh, under the, uh, contract back in nineteen, twenty nineteen, that it was, well, it wasn't so much contingent on it, but that we would go into a second year, a second round?
Correct, yes, sir. And, and the re, the price would basically be the same as the second one, but now because they, they were changing, they're getting rid of the, what they call the, the nine inch imagery, and then going to just three and six, there's, it was, I think, an increase of, I think, if I remember correctly, it was about seven or eight thousand dollars to get that better resolution, and that's why, but it was really for a six-year period that they quoted us, the only difference is, is now they have better resolution provided.
So we basically end into a six-year contract with them?
Basically, yes, yeah, yes, and typically, counties normally get, uh, have their county flown, um, every three years. Now, there are some counties in Georgia, metropolitan counties, that are like growing by leaps and bounds, they get it done every year. Only catch that, you know, for the development that's going on and such, so.
Okay. Yeah.
Call, we haven't had a vote on it yet, have we?
Yeah, no, we haven't gone yet, anymore on it?
So, so.
Discussion on it?
So the motion is to accept this proposal from Eagle View with the stated amounts, you'll put the amounts in the minutes, you'll put that in the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. What is the?
What does the contract turn six years, what is that?
That was, that was the original, that was the original contract period that was there when we did it the first time.
But they only could be put one time.
They only did it one time, it was, they were, they, they were gonna lock in the price, but their, the resolution changed, they were actually better, produce a better imagery.
Is that for, now that's for six terms?
No, so this one, the one, the price they quoted there is for the, this coming up for three years.
It's for three.
So it won't be done again until.
So we'll do it three more.
Yeah, so it'd be twenty twenty-five or twenty-six, actually, that won't fly until twenty twenty-six, January, February, twenty twenty-six. If you wanna go for another three years.
For a hundred and fourteen thousand, huh?
Yes, sir.
Lot of money to fly over this thing, yeah.
Well, it. I think they mentioned too about how, not only just for the view of the county, but also for, I guess, for tax purposes, and not, not type, but? For home ownership, uh, development, you know, what's available and.
Yes, sir.
So I guess it has a lot of different facets that we can use it for.
Is this the same thing of sort of like Google Earth?
Yes, sir, but a much better quality.
Much better.
Yes, sir. As far as the resolution. And as, uh? Mr. Schubert was explaining earlier, uh, pictometry, they're, you're able to take a view and, and look at it from all four sides and also a, a top-down. You, you can move it around and see the sides of the building rather than just the very top.
Used more for tax purposes than anything.
Probably so, yes, sir, but engineering uses it, um. I use it quite a bit myself in the things investigating, you know, roads and ditches and those kind of things, cause you have new roads, paved roads, you know, ditches cut and all those kind of things and? Um, just for various reasons, I mean, it's, it's used by multiple, multiple people.
He gave the example, I believe, that the sheriff's office investigators will use it, um, to see how many windows there are in a building or the layout of different things.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? Now let's vote on it. Let's see, Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
I vote no.
Where's the money, you say it's gonna come out, you say it's in their budget?
Yes, sir.
It's in the special budget by?
Well, we, basically, the, the last time we split this up, and we, it came out of splosh, but we're able to divide it out among various departments. Cause almost, I would say, pretty much a good number of our departments use that, that information.
You mentioned it last time, so we're in waterfall to help with this, you're, did you say you're gonna contact them?
I did, and, yes, sir, and to, had heard back yet, but I'll, I'll see if they did.
If they wanna buy and get a share of it.
I think last time, they, they, uh? They paid seventeen percent of the amount.
Okay.
Okay, on the old nickel highway resurfacing bid award. I hear a motion to accept that. Or to award that, yeah.
You know, I can make a motion, but? Do, after the discussion on extending the amount of payment? Do we need to table the bid and then get that worked out and then come back or approve this and then look after the other one? Like? Cause I know y'all had a discussion during the break.
If you accept that bid, or you can extend that project, if we do it, can't we?
Or, there's some question about the amount, I think.
Is that what, what you saying is, is if we can?
Well, I think the concern would be, or Brandon and I did discuss during the break, is I think it's currently, um, a, a six mile. And so we're looking at adding not a small portion, you can do a change order to add, you know, additional, um, for, and we've recommended before, up to twenty-five percent. But you're really looking at almost, you know, up to a fifty percent change, and so because of that, um, you know, it'd be our recommendation that you do rebid that. Also. That additional four, the four mile section.
So we'd have to rebid it then if we, if we increased it that much?
We think that's the best course of action.
But based on our need, or the state's need for us to go ahead and do it while they're out there, we need to go ahead and approve this bid?
That would be fun.
Mr. Manager, Brandon?
I would, uh?
We talked.
Be concerned if we did that with the possibility that? An additional contractor would be brought into the picture? Because there's no guarantee that the currently awarded contractor would get the other four miles, and then you would end up having a joint? In the work, which I think is what we're really trying to avoid with doing this as one project and not having the joint there, and it was high, I mean, Dixie Highway? You have a continuous project, it's all done at one time, hopefully having a, a better, uh, value and a better ride.
Project.
Project is complete, which makes perfect sense, and I apologize for not catching that when we originally started talking about this project. So I would think now, given those, um, issues to try to address that, I think we would just, uh, not award this and rebid the whole thing, um? The entire ten miles from one fifty-eight all the way to the county line? And try to do all that at one time with one resurfacing project? And, uh, and rebid the work, in other words. And it's just gonna take another thirty days to advertise this project and, um? And rebid it, that, that process takes about thirty days, so as quick as we can get a disposal together? We can go ahead and put that out for bid, if that's the desire of commission.
So, I'm gonna turn to what, the proper thing would be to just table this right now?
Well, I think what we would do is reject the current bids for that amount, and then we're just gonna ask for, you know, bids on the, the greater amount of the project.
I thought you said they was in a, I mean, they wanted to do this now while they were?
They do, and I'll, I'll run this by the DOT to make sure that this isn't gonna be a problem, and I'll ask for another thirty days? To, um, see if we can delay the beginning of the widening project? And maybe, um, find out from the DOT if that's gonna hold them up with, with the work they have going on right now with this widening.
And then I guess at that time, on time, you would have a figure as to how much more it would cost for the additional widening and resurfacing.
Because it's such a great.
It's looking like it'll be another seven hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, so, so you, you'd be talking about doubling the cost of this.
Yeah.
This contract, and so that's the, um, twenty-five percent rule, you'd be beyond that, so that's why we're saying we should probably just reject these bids now? And rebid it with the entire scope of work.
So if you find out from the DOT, you say, no, it's now or never, do it right now, then what, do we have a call meeting to approve this section and move on?
The, the only thing that would really impact would be the, that striping cost?
Right.
Or that, we might have to pay for that six miles of.
The safety money?
Of, say, of the striping that we were trying to save, we might, um, might have to pay for that out of county funds, which is? Unfortunate, but, uh, that's all you really, they could go ahead and do that widening, they could start on it tomorrow, go ahead and do that project? And they would put the R, new RPMs and new final striping down, permanent striping and everything on that widening? Um, and then we can come back and do the widening of the other four miles and then resurface the whole thing at one time. We were just trying to, to save that money of that, uh, final striping.
Oh, if we go five million, that's seven hundred thousand.
That's out of the T-sploss, didn't it?
Yes, that's a single county T-sploss project. We originally estimated around two million dollars for this widening and resurfacing the whole thing to begin with. So the fact that the, um, DOT is doing this widening on six miles or so, we'll be able to? Save under that, it just might shift some other projects a little further out.
Time-wise, but we won't be taking any money from any other project.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, I kinda feel like I better go ahead and accept this bid because you put it back out there? It going up ten, fifteen percent, twenty percent.
Yeah, they're not wanting bids.
They gonna, they gonna go, they gonna up. Take this and then rebid the other, bid the other four mile, that's pretty good project for a mile. I think we probably be better off to go here with it, that's my opinion. But I know they're rated.
They don't ever go down, they usually go.
They don't go up, they, they won't go down, they go up, I know. They won't up. There, I hear a motion to? Accept this bid? Or that's a vote? Hey, you, you said it the way you said it.
I said I would make the motion to accept it if that's the wishes of the commission.
Okay, you got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Barner?
Aye.
Chair, let's go.
One question, Chairman, have, have I been directed to proceed with the, with putting together some, some documents for the remainder of this roadway just as soon as possible? Is that what we wanna try?
To finish the road.
From, from Nick, from Dixie Highway to the county line, we wanna put a, a set of documents out there and bid on that just as soon as possible?
Is that, okay, is that, okay with the commission? Is that okay with y'all?
Yes.
Y'all wanna go ahead, let's see?
Yeah.
Let's go ahead, and they may, while they there, they may not do it until they can do all of it.
Yes, sir.
You know? Okay, let's do that then. We need a, we just verbalize that, okay? Now, now, the CSX Rashard proposal drainage improvement.
Does, does the commission want us to, uh, or authorize us to, or prefer that we give that no rise, is it a no-rise study, Brandon?
Yes, sir, they call it a no-rise certificate.
Yeah, who, is that how the commission?
Is that how we need to ask for a no-rise?
Certificate, yes, sir, yep. I think, from that standpoint of the flood possibilities.
Can we make a motion, and I'll make a motion, table it until we get the appropriate paperwork, which is, includes the no-rise.
Okay.
Second.
We got a second, okay? We, we wanna be neighbors to CSX, they're good taxpayers, they're good neighbors. And if we can help them, maybe they can help us, and that's kinda what I'm looking at, you know, and I know that? I think that the water problem in Kittle Creek, and if y'all ever think about it a little bit, is Baptist Village has a dam across Kittle Creek. Now, if we're gonna study about getting the water down, we need to study about widening the outfall over there, cause that mostly the biggest problem back? Up our way is because there's a dam all the way across Kittle Creek. And if you, if you think about it a little bit, they're the cause of all the water backing up. But that was built so far back, we can't change it. And nobody studies that any, but, uh, there's a dam on Kittle Creek. And everything back that way floods until the dam water runs down off the dam. And if, we're not causing no more water or anything, so if we could increase the? If we could talk to Baptist Village something other than about that dam or something, you know, I think that would be our most of our, our rise in our water.
I think, Mr. Chairman, somebody told me the fate, the Corps of Engineers had done the study on that dam, and it set that high. Because I think that there were some issues with them raising that water level?
Yeah.
Kill vegetation around the farm? And they got in some trouble about that in the past, if I'm remembering correctly, but I think the Corps has set that elevation?
Yeah.
Their recommendations from whenever this had came up at some point in the past.
Okay.
And I can clarify that with public word, but I think that's where I was told about that damn elevation. But if it does continue to be a problem, I guess we could go back to the Corps of Engineers and have them come back and do another analysis on it? Try to see if it needs to be adjusted, or that outflow, um, increased and, you know, widened so that it could carry more water.
Yeah. That day I've been a long time, it's been a hundred years, right? Long, all my life.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that CSX is a good, uh, neighbor, good taxpayer and all that, but? By the same token, we wanna try to work with them, but we don't wanna do it at the expense of harming our citizens, you know, and causing them a big problem? At the, uh, expense of, you know, making, accommodating CSX, so I think it's something that we need to try to get a win-win situation? Where everybody will be pretty much happy, you know, and satisfied.
I think. Brandon, uh, he's been out there a couple of times, and I have, uh, right there at that pipe? That they won't increase, I don't know why DOT put that smaller pipe in there. Okay, that water backs up in them trees, um, if you're going out on the left and right, takes a while for that to go under there. And the ditch would probably take it, and the, and the creek takes the water anyway, but I think they just wanna increase the pipe. And, and I think that this is really a good thing for them, and I don't even believe they gonna dig the ditch any bigger or anything, just? So the water can get under the roof. Beaver Dam and Nile stopped it up, I think, it's too small. But.
Scott, you'll also see where the city is on their stormwater limits?
We'll touch base with them again and see if they have a standing on this of some sort.
Yeah.
Cause the Rashard is in the city limit? So it's gotta come across there, so the city's got to be.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I think the motion's on the table, to table it till we get that later?
All right, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Second, all right, vote on that motion, table it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair, let's go. All right. EMS life packs fifteen, life pack fifteen, equipment purchase request. Okay, I hear a motion on that?
Make a motion to accept the bid.
My second.
I got a motion and a second, do we have any discussion on it? Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair, let's go. All right, water main relocation on Smith Road. Now, we wanna table that until we hear some more from Satilla, or? We're, we're gonna, we suggest that they put a, I mean, that they relocate the water line.
Make a motion that it be tabled, Mr. Chairman.
Do we table it?
Make a motion that it be tabled until Mr. Moore can come back with some answers.
Okay.
Any recommendations?
I'll second that.
How we gonna do it?
So we still got plenty of time on the bid, the bid had, it went out yet?
I'm sorry?
The bid's, the bid's the bomb, so we need to, uh? I don't know if we can table it, I mean, can we? We need to do something on it, don't we? Are we telling them just to go ahead and move, relocate it?
And that's kinda what we were thinking, was do we wanna do the same what we did with Cypress and pay for the material cost and then have them move it, or? I mean, I know that, I think Jennifer said that she needed to check the agreement to see if that would be something that, that's a cost that they would have to endure. Total cost, basically.
Let me ask you this, can we make a motion to? Request that it be removed, and then we can, after it's, we, we, I mean, to relocate it? And then we'll discuss whether we wanna help them on it or not? Or? Go ahead and let them know they gotta move it.
Yep.
So, the contractors? The bid's due tomorrow, and they'll be bidding on the contractors moving this water line?
No, sir, it says on the, in the drawings, it says by the others.
By the others.
So then the work of the water main itself is separate from the roof.
So then the work of the water main itself is separate from the road work. One thing that Trent didn't mention that we, I was reminded of is there's some clearing that's gonna be required on this roadway with the roadway that was acquired, and so this water main installation work will not be able to be done until that clearing is done as part of the contract. So even though it's not in the cost of the contract, that work is gonna have to be coordinated with the contract work of the roadway so that that clearing is done before the water main is relocated, which is exactly what we did on the Cypress Street project.
Right.
Recently.
So as far as the bids being due, we've got time for you and Mr. Moore to work with the water park and come out with a recommendation to the board?
Yes, sir, the bid tomorrow does not.
Does not, does not affect it by that.
Unless y'all decided y'all wanted us to move that as part of the project, which I haven't heard any discussion about that, so you shouldn't be taking the bid tomorrow.
Brandon, what, what do you guesstimate that the cost of material would be? Just a guesstimation?
Eight thousand.
It was five dollars and something a foot the last time we voted.
Forty thousand dollars for pipe, probably, what is, twelve five hundreds? They cost you about?
Do y'all still have y'all's package right there, it's your estimate?
About here.
About fifty-six thousand.
My chair.
I get that off the top of my head.
I think the estimate on there had those units in there, the quantities in there.
Bless you.
Yes, sir. Ten five hundreds, yes, sir.
Ten.
Ten.
So you're talking about how much money, I mean, for the material?
I would guess, what, sixty thousand dollars?
Around fifty, I would. I just talked off my head, I'd say fifty.
So you say on Cypress, we pretty much was in the same situation, and the county paid for the material?
Very similar. I think the total material cost was around forty thousand on Cypress, thirty-four, forty.
And then they incurred everything else, right? The relocation?
Yes, sir.
Of the line and all, labor.
The, the equipment and labor was, uh, Satilla Regional Water and City Department.
Yeah. Okay, let's, I'll ask you last, we have a motion to ask them to relocate water, man. We asked on relocating water, right? Okay. I have a motion in that.
I write a motion. You said, please?
Okay, second.
I second it.
Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Chair votes up. All right. Now, the county manager's report.
I don't, excuse me, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
You don't have any? Okay. Commission comment?
Um, I don't. I guess, maybe I fell asleep. Why do we pull the driveway and ordinance?
There was something I was gonna check on, it was the, I forgot what it was now, off the top of my head.
Oh, yeah, on the pipe.
Yeah.
Or something I think about the permits, Mr. Chairman, something about the permit schedule or fee that we were charging.
About the cost of the permits?
Yeah, uh, that's what Commissioner Pope wanted to be to check, to see about the cost of, the actual labor cost.
Right.
To see what that might be.
Right.
And then bring that information back to y'all.
Because it's fifty dollars on the over main.
Yeah, but.
The admin fees fifty, the, the pipe is four hundred, so it made it four fifty, but that was just that cost. It wasn't no labor cost or anything of that nature, and that's what it was, I couldn't remember it exactly. Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, commissioners' comment? Anybody got anything else? Okay, I hear a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned.